All right, we will call the regular meeting of Peters Township Council for Monday, August 28th, 2023 to order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Dr. Froskett will not be here. Ms. Shannelfal will not be here. Mr. Art Curry?
I'm here. I will be here.
Mr. Posner?
Here.
Mr. Steigel here.
I am here.
Mr. Ross.
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 14th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, special reports, Peters Township Library, Reed Local, Heat Local Program, September 9th. Mr. Lauer?
Yes, this is an annual program sponsored by the library. It has grown over the years. It's now outside under tents. There'll be 22 local authors there. There'll be three food trucks. There's 106 books that have been written by local authors that will be available for people to purchase. There's also workshops, writing workshops at a company this day. It's really turned into quite an event. I just wanted to make sure that council and the community was aware of it.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. Move on to audience comments. This is the part of the meeting where anyone in the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
And we, I've been chastised by the secretarial staff here at the township that I have not enforced the requirement that everyone write their name and address down when they sign in. So I'd ask that you please do that.
I always do.
I appreciate that.
Don't they have a tape of this?
I'm going to post a note here.
The name of the person, how it's spelled.
And since the post-it note has a smiley face on it, we're going to go.
All right. John McCarthy, Greenbrier Drive, Peters 105, Greenbrier Drive, Peters Township. I wanted to tell you, the library has consistently, over a long time, purchased books that I requested. So keep funding the library. But the second thing I wanted to tell you is I've observed the Peters Township Police Department doing an outstanding job checking homes when requested by residents when they are on vacation. They don't do a proflcter job. They take a serious walk around, and I've seen them do it daily. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Anybody else from the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move right into unfinished business, of which there is none. So we'll move into new business. First item, award of a contract under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars program for the purchase of ballistic shields for use by the Peters Township Police Department.
So the Peters Township 2023 budget includes the Equitable Sharing Program Fund, and this fund accounts for the revenues received by the township as a result of the police department's participation in the U.S. Food and Drug Administration Task Force. In 2023, the Equitable Sharing Program includes an annual appropriation of $916,000. As part of that appropriation, $130,000 was earmarked for the purpose of purchasing ballistic shields. If approved, the intention is to have these ballistic shields available for the SROs in the school buildings, as well as for officers in their police vehicles. This contract would be awarded under the Co-Stars program, which is the Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program. The amount of the contract would be $118,960, and it's my recommendation that we award a contract to Galls for the purchase of 14 ballistic shields in that amount.
I make a motion that we award the contract to Galls for the purchase of 14 ballistic shields for use by the Peters Township Police Department through the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $118,960, which I note is less than the amount that we allocated and budgeted for.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for the purchase of tactical vests for use by Peters Police Officers assigned to the South Hills Council and Government's Cooperative Emergency Response Program.
As council recall, when the township was the recipient of this, these funds from the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, the chief requested that a portion of those funds be earmarked to assist the South Hills Council Governance Cooperative Police Programs, one of which being the SERC team. There was $140,000 allocated for the purchase of tactical vests under that program. Initially, we went out and attempted to acquire these through Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program. However, when the price of the vest greatly exceeded the anticipated price, there was a decision made to go through a formal bidding process. In the formal bidding process, there were two valid bids, one from the Pittsburgh Public Supply and one from Principal Defense. The difference in the per-unit cost is significant, but the vest that was quoted from the company out of South Carolina was not the vest that was specified. For that reason, I agree with Detective Giles, who's the commander of the SERC team, that what makes sense for council to do is to award the contract to Pittsburgh Public Supply. Like I said, the amount that was allocated for this was $140,000. To purchase the vest for all members of the SERC team at that unit cost is $169,491, so it exceeds the budget by approximately $29,500. There has been savings in our purchasing through the Equitable Share Program and other areas. So this won't take us over the budget for that general category of capital equipment. That being said, if council's preference is to only authorize the expenditure to $140,000, South Hills Area Council Governance is prepared to pay the difference, it's the chief and my recommendation that we go ahead and use the money out of the Equitable Sharing Account and purchase the 49 tactical vests.
Well, the money that we saved, that we got from the formative or whatever it was, if we save that money, are we allowed to spend it on something else?
Yes.
Like savings that we're getting on the last thing we voted on was roughly, what, oh, in fact?
$12,000.
About $12,000?
Yeah. You can spend it on other things. The way this money is, is like any other money the township has. There's a broad category, police capital equipment. As long as we're staying within that, we meet our own requirements for our own budgeting process. In terms of the requirements from the Fed, there is kind of carte blanche about where you spend this money. So that's why, given that we were under budget on other items, we're recommending that we go ahead and purchase these vests for every member of the SERC team.
And I move, we move to purchase 49 tactical vests for total cost $169,491 from Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply Company.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
Well, then, the only other point you'd make is it's like $500 less per unit than what the Co-Stars.
Than what the Co-Stars price was.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution amending the job description for the Peters Township Pub, Parks and Recreation Director.
Oh, when the position of Park and Rec Director was created, at the same time, there was the, a position of Park Maintenance Specialist that was created, and this goes back to like 1986, 1987. At that time, there was a real problem in terms of maintaining the parks. And the thought was to create a situation that was a shared responsibility between the Park and Rec Director and the Public Works Director in terms of maintenance. That worked for a long time, and it certainly kept the needs of the park in front of the Public Works Director. Over time, though, it became a problem, and Mr. Meesha, who serves as the person who heads the maintenance of park, is now reporting to two people. And in most recent times, that has not worked well, both in terms of getting things done inside the parks and being able to move public works employees from road assignments to park assignments and park assignments to road assignments. So what our intention is here is to eliminate this dual reporting and make the park maintenance foreman report straight to the Public Works Director. The other thing we've found, since Mr. Scott has taken over it, he understands this, and the level of cooperation between Mr. Scott and the Park and Rec Department has improved greatly. So it's my recommendation that we adopt a resolution 8223, amending the job description for the Park and Rec Director.
Is this something that's allowed to be commented on?
Yes.
I know you guys probably have looked at it in the past. I'm wondering what your thoughts are, institute residency requirements for department heads or anybody. Obviously, there'd be grandfather situations, but I think maybe it's starting to get important for people to live in the community that we bring in to be department heads, assistant managers, township managers. Obviously, I don't know your situations, but some of you may not live here. That would be an undue burden, but anybody coming in, have we ever considered whether that's a good idea to give them a residency requirement?
What is?
Which positions?
Well, you have to be within so many miles of the line if you're a policeman or firefighter, but.
The challenge has always been in Peters Township, in particular, depending on what positions you're talking about, is given the nature of the housing stock, you're going to narrow the pool of people that are going to be able to live here, so.
So you have talked about it in the past, or?
We have had residents. We've talked about it for a long time.
We do have residency requirements for the geographic area that extends beyond Peters' limits, but there is a restriction with regard to how far away an individual could live.
Right. I don't think I'm talking about like fire or police department personnel as much as I'm talking about the figureheads of department heads within the township.
But many of those firemen and police officers make far more money than department heads in Peters Township.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah.
Thinking a lot from a money perspective, but I think that's something to discuss.
Well, it makes a difference in terms of affordability and what one can afford. I don't think a lot of our employees, if you restricted them to having to live inside of Peters Township, I think that there's a whole lot of them that just couldn't afford to do that.
Yeah. I just wanted to hear a discussion on it and see what your thoughts were.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Can I make a comment on that?
You can't tell people where to live. People have the right to live outside the township and work here.
I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution 080223, amending the job description for Parks and Recreation Director.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Kirkpatrick Consolidation Plan as shown on drawings prepared by the Windridge Engineering Company, dated July 7, 2023, for Kyle and Stephanie Kirkpatrick.
So what you see on the screen, there are two adjacent lots. What they're intending on doing is to removing the property line that separates those two lots with the purpose of creating one lot.
I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes to Kirkpatrick Consolidation Plan as shown on drawings prepared by Windridge Engineering Company, dated July 7, 2023, for Kyle and Stephanie Kirkpatrick.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Revised Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One as shown on drawings prepared by KU Resources, Inc., dated July 18, 2023, for Environmental Sound Enterprises.
So on December 19, 2022, council approved the Westbury Phase One final plan. When the developer was preparing to process the application for Phase Two of the final plan, they discovered that they had inadvertently left off a lot that they wanted to include in Phase One. That lot is outlined there, and I would agree with them. It makes sense that that lot be included in Phase One. The advantage to the developer is, by doing so, you can now have a, apply for a building permit and have a building permit issued for that lot. There are two conditions that are minor, that are outstanding. The only thing that I would recommend in addition, that the plan, the label for the plan be rewritten so that in fact it delineates that it's a revision, so that it be labeled the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One Revised, since there is confusion in the future with regard to two recorded plans having the exact same name. So with that in mind, it's my recommendation that council approve for recording purposes the Revised Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One.
So moved.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve for recording purposes the Revised Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One as shown on drawings prepared by KU Resources, Inc., dated July 18, 2023, for Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC, subject to the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission and the Township Manager.
Second?
I have a motion. I'm overwhelmed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Four zero one, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase Two as shown on drawings prepared by KU Resources, dated July 18, 2023, for Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC.
I'm going to have Mr. Coons describe that line for you.
So back in December of 2022, Township Council approved the Revised Preliminary Plan for Westbury in Phase One on that same night. Public improvements have been done in Phase One. Phase One plan was recorded earlier this year. They are now in front of council for the Phase Two final plan, so they can initiate the installation of public improvements, begin on our subdivision improvement agreements, and so they can subsequently record this plan either later this year or next year, so they can submit building permit applications. Planning Commission reviewed the Phase Two subdivision plan at their August 10th meeting of this year and provided a recommendation of approval to council, subject to seven total conditions. This includes the final 31 lots of the Westbury development on two new roads. We have White Cliff Drive and Winthrop Drive, and Winthrop Drive is the one that is, provides access and potential future connection to the adjacent 370-acre Miller property off to the west. It is Paul's recommendation that Township.
I don't think it's our.
Our recommendation, it's collective recommendation. The Township Council approved for recording purposes the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase Two as shown on the drawings prepared by KU Resources Incorporated, dated July 18, 2023, for Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC, subject to the conditions recommended by the Peters Township Planning Commission.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase Two, shown on drawings prepared by KU Resources, Inc., dated July 18, 2023, for Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC, subject to the conditions recommended by the Peters Township Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Four zero one, Mr. Lauer. And just for the minutes, Mr. Ross is recusing himself from the Westbury matters. I should have said that before we got into them. Next item on the agenda is authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a developer's agreement with Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC related to the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase Two.
So this is something different that we have not done before. For the entire time that I have been here, the assumption has been that implicit in the approval of the plan is the authorization of the appropriate township official to enter into the subdivision improvement agreement. When we were working on the Westbury plan, the whole question of this subdivision improvement agreement was raised by the developer, and I don't, I want to make sure there's no ambiguity with regard to the authority of someone representing council to actually enter into that agreement. The reason why the agreement isn't in front of you tonight is that it's, each of these is drafted unique to that plan based upon estimates of public improvement costs, and those estimates aren't done until after the plan is approved. Generally, what's happened in the past is the agreements are being drafted and the planning department, they're being sent to the solicitor for his review for approval, and then they're being executed by the chairman of council. I think that's the appropriate course for this, but having said that, I think it's probably prudent to have the council authorize the chairman of council to be able to sign that agreement.
Does it make any difference that this refers to the original plan and not the revised plan that we just passed?
No, what's in there is that agreement's in there only as a sample for what an agreement would look like. The fact of the matter is, in the vast majority of these plans, what's changing is the nature of the public improvements and the amount that's associated that needs to be bonded. In some plans, as you'll see in the next one, when we get to Tuscany II, sometimes there are issues that go beyond that, and so each of these kind of stands on its own.
So we do this yearly then with the new?
Whenever we come in for final plan approval.
Final plan approvals, you'll see this each and every time.
Yeah, but I'm saying, will we change chairman?
Yes.
Three, do a re?
Well, and we always do these at the appropriate township official for a reason that Mr. Cozer was on vacation or something like that, the vice chairman of council could sign that.
So it's not unique to Mr. Cozer. It's any chairman next year, we don't have to vote him.
Okay, all right.
I think that was.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at the sample. I forgot it was just a sample.
I'll try to find this. G?
G.
G?
Yep.
I make a motion that we direct the township solicitor to review and approve the proposed subdivision improvement agreement with Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC, related to the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase Two, and authorize the appropriate township official to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
Do we want to denote the appropriate township official being the chairman?
I don't think you need to do that, but that's up to you guys.
I'll just say that the.
You're the appropriate township official, because if the chairman's not, you're the vice chairman, right?
As long as there's an.
Yeah, but township official could be.
All of you. But I'm not the appropriate township official in this case, and it will be Mr. Cozer.
Okay, then I'm not going to change it then.
All right, motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Four zero one, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Tuscany II Plan of Lots as shown on drawings prepared by the Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated July 31, 2023, for 339 Just About Land Company LLC.
And we're going to talk about item H on the agenda, but it is tied to the development agreement, so we're going to have discussions about that as well. But I think where we're going to start is to have Seth give us a summary of the plan. You should know that the developers here, if there are questions, we have.
Back in March of this year, Township Council did approve the preliminary plan for Tuscany II, which is proposed by 339 Just About Land Co. LLC, the developer. They are now back in front of council, seeking final plan approval. Just a refresher on this development, this is a project under the Conservation Residential Overlay, adjacent to the Tuscany Plan of Lots. This is along Just About Road. This particular Tuscany II plan is a little bit further southwest than the original Tuscany plan. It has frontage on Just About and Sienna Trail. The point of access on Just About Road will be a road that connects up to Victor Lane, which is an existing street as part of the Tuscany One development. Each street in the development is within a 50-foot right-of-way, utilizing our 24-foot cartways with 10-foot wide lanes, two-foot wedge curbs, and then allows for a green strip between the edge of curb and the five-foot sidewalk. If you take into consideration the 25-foot front yard setbacks for each of these lots and the 50-foot right-of-way, the nearest any home could be to the right-of-way in this development is 38 feet. At the intersection of Walker Trace and Victor Street and Logan Bridge Drive and Victor Street within the development, they had previously included traffic circles at those intersections. We find those to be problematic, so we felt a better course of action for traffic calming was raised intersections there. We've done those in other recent projects, and they've gone well, so we're incorporating those into this plan. At their June 8 regular Planning Commission meeting of this year, Planning Commission provided a recommendation of approval for the Tuscany II final plan to Township Council, subject to a grand total of 20 conditions, 11 of which are still pending, and the remainder of which have been completed at this time. In addition to condition number 10 about the highway occupancy permit, it has an implication that the plan cannot be recorded until the realigned intersection is designed in a manner that is deemed appropriate by PennDOT. The intersection of Just About and Sienna Trail is an intersection that is on the Township's Capital Improvement Program for Improvement. If you're familiar with that intersection, it's a pretty terrible realignment at this point. You've got a real sharp bend coming off Sienna Trail onto Just About, and with this development having frontage on that intersection, able to acquire right-of-way for the improvement of this intersection, we feel it's appropriate to realign that intersection as part of the Tuscany II development. You know, considerations and talking with the developer about this project, they will generate some traffic impact fees from the development to the tune of just over $1,600 per unit. That could be considered a credit towards that intersection, but it certainly isn't enough to cover the cost of the intersection.
So what?
Go ahead.
To talk about, to talk about the intersection, you know, the, a couple things. One, I, given the PennDOT's approval process for HOPs and given the nature of what's being asked here, what I don't think makes sense is to hold up the developer from being able to move forward with his development while we wait for the approval of the HOP. It would not surprise me that that HOP approval process could be at least 18 months out there. So what we're suggesting is that rather than to do that, is to come up with, change the language that was recommended by the Planning Commission and require that the developer make application to PennDOT no later than December 31st of this year, and that we're also suggesting that to be able to move that along, that the township be a co-applicant on that application. No one moves PennDOT quicker than they want to, but the municipality has a little bit more influence than the developer would have in this case. The other thing that, about this, and this really gets into what's involved in the development agreement. When this, when an estimate was done for this, the improvements of this intersection, it was estimated that it would cost $577,000 to do this relocation. And that is an estimate that was done by Mr. Mudry, our traffic engineer. It's based upon prevailing wage. If the developer undertakes this, I would anticipate that it would cost him some money. But I don't, even if you offset this by the limited amount of traffic impact fees that are being generated, I think the burden on the developer is well beyond which is fair. And what, having spoke to Mr. Hoskins about this, what I would propose that we do is to split that cost with the developer, and the township assume half the cost of doing this improvement. I think the thing to keep in mind is, at some point in time, this improvement needs to be done. And what Mr. Hoskins is doing, in part, is facilitating this by dedicating the land needed to accommodate the intersection improvement, beyond making the contribution of half the cost of doing the project. Without that dedication of land, the only way this improvement ever gets done is the township acquiring property by eminent domain, and that's, and I don't think that's something that anybody on council is prepared to do in this case. So I think it's a, it's a fair deal in terms of what the township's getting and not having to spend $577,000 of its own money to do that improvement. The other aspect of this is because it's along Just About Road, and Just About Road does not meet township specifications for a roadway, it doesn't meet PennDOT specifications for their roadway, Mr. Hoskins is going to donate additional right-of-way for the entire length of Just About Road in front of his property. Now, if the township wanted, it could require that that in fact be improved to PennDOT standards by placing. standards by placing arms along that road, but Mr. Zamidis and myself are both of the opinion that it makes little sense to require that when the remainder of Just About Road will not be improved. What Mr. Hoskins has offered instead is to pay a fee to the township in lieu of doing those improvements, dedicate the, the right-of-way, and that, that fee would be the equivalent of $2,000 per lot or $74,000 total. So this would all be contained in the development agreement, and that's why this development agreement is a little bit different than, than the ones that we have seen otherwise. There are two other conditions that I think need, there are conditions that need to be modified. The one is, is this idea about the HOP and applying for it. The other, the amount that's shown in the recommendation from, from the Planning Commission in terms of the traffic impact fee is slightly higher than what it really is. The real traffic impact fee is $1,607.43. And then there should be also a condition that in lieu of undertaking improvements, the Just About Road, 339 Just About Land Company shall pay the township a fee of $74,000. So, but kind of.
I think what's a little bit unique about this intersection in particular, Just About Sienna Trail, particularly the intersection improvement, it's not triggered by any type of traffic counts from this development, it's purely just geometry, and it needs to be addressed at some point in time. It's not like he's coming in and all of a sudden, it's an issue. It's an issue today. We just have an opportunity in front of us to deal with it.
So what's shown up there on the screen is what I believe Mr. Hoskins and I have agreed to. They're going to make a dedication of the right-of-way along Just About Road. They're going to pay a fee in lieu of doing the improvements on, on Just About Road. They're going to enter into a partnership to undertake the intersection project, and the township and the developer to be co-applicants, the developer to undertake the improvements. The traffic impact fees of the development will be used to partially offset the cost, and the township and the developer will split the cost of, of the improvement. The developer being permitted to proceed with a grading permit prior to the plan being recorded. This is something that we have done in the past. I know Mr. Hoskins is, is anxious to get going. He's got people interested in locating in that plan, and this would help him move along while, while he waits for HOPs. And allow the plan to be recorded prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit for the intersection improvement project, and that the intersection improvement project be bonded in an amount of the estimate prior to the recording of the plan.
I think this is acceptable.
You got to sign.
As far as building permits and starting the houses, as long as we post the bond for the whole thing, we can do that, correct?
The plan would need to be recorded, so any outstanding public improvements have to be bonded.
Have to be bonded. So we know the HOP permit, I mean, like you said, it could be six months or 18 months.
Well, and the HOP permits for the lots that, that right on Just About Road, those HOPs would have to be in place before you could.
Issue the permit.
Permits for those.
Well, it's actually only two, right Seth?
No, there's, there's three lots that have.
Effective?
Direct frontage.
Yeah.
On Justin.
Can we get that back up?
One side.
I know the three you're talking about.
There's three in the bottom right-hand corner, those all three need HOPs.
Oh, that's right, because we started back at dead points and started cutting across. Okay, so I agree with that then. Okay, thank, thanks everyone.
So before Council, there are two things. One is the approval of the final plan, the other is the, the authorization to enter into development agreement.
Yeah, Paul, you didn't put a copy of the developer agreement though in the bucket.
Well, because the development agreement, again, is used in the property and has to be drafted. We don't know what the public improvements estimates are.
Okay.
Because we don't send it to the engineer prior to it being approved.
I guess the idea, Gary, was to, for every final plan.
Yes.
Okay, a separate agenda item for the developer's agreement.
Are we going, are we, are we going to be able to review the agreement?
I guess that's what I'm.
Before it gets approved?
If you want, the other way to do this is, but it, and it doesn't matter to us because, but I don't know what impact it has on, on the developer. We can, after you approve the final plans, we can draft them up and bring them back to you. But you've never seen a development agreement prior to this, I can tell you that.
Well, I thought the more eyes would look at it, maybe it's better.
Yeah, I don't, I've never seen this.
Paul, if I may. Good evening, David Barton, Council for Mr. Hoskins. One alternative would be as a part of Mr. Smith's review, he could circulate it to members of Council and so forth. And then ultimately, what emerges from his legal review would be any tweaks that the elected officials would require, such that you could technically approve it, approve the authorized appropriate official to.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, if I, if I have a choice, if, if Council needs to look at it, I would rather that they do it as a group and.
Yeah, sometimes we do have some discussions over terms. It's helpful to have everybody in the same room.
Absolutely.
And the nice thing is they meet every two weeks, so you're not out 30 days waiting for them.
Well, you'll be out probably 30 days because we will not have the estimates back.
It takes some time.
But I'm just saying in general.
Okay, so I think as long as Mr. Hoskins is, is able to begin with the grading, that's moving things forward. Paperwork can catch up.
He can't, I would assume he can move ahead with the grading. There's, there'd be no reason.
He has his MPTS permit, that's the key. Okay, thank you.
Just add to that, I mean, by the time you get the erosion control up first, all the staking out done, you know, that's going to be two or three weeks. So that is moving forward, but there's nothing there really being done.
And if you want us to bring it back, we can do that.
All right, well, that's what I, I would think we should look at it, it's up there.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
And the other thing I wanted to clarify was, and, because, you know, when I first looked at this and, you know, I thought, well geez, you know, until you explained it, which you did tonight, but, you know, the 500 and something thousand dollars isn't going to be 500,000 dollars. And even though we're splitting that, and the offset is because he's donating a ton of land.
Oh, he is donating.
He's not getting compensated for that.
Which he's not getting.
Other than doing it this way. And so I understand that. I just, to be, you know, open and so everybody knows, because I'm sure there's somebody at home that's going to listen to this and say, well, wait a second.
You're making a deal with the developer.
Yeah, well, going back, going back to Seth's point, this, this development's not causing the problem that exists. And so it's an opportunity really to have him help the Council offset the problem that exists right now.
Yeah. I think Mr. Hoskins' description to me in an email response is absolutely correct. It's expensive but fair.
And the other thing too, in the absence of using him, I mean, we'd have to buy all that land at a number that would be more than his, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I understand, but I wanted to make it clear on.
Correct.
Anybody that's watching that like, you know, that somebody might figure out, well, why are we paying more, you know, than.
I agree.
Not paying for bill, but that's the reason. And I know Paul mentioned it, but it wasn't, you know, somebody might miss that, and I wanted to make sure we add that.
You're right, it's good to flush that out. It's very good, it's very good for the township. You know, I'm a resident, my children are all residents, I'll go to school here, so, you know, it's, we're going to, you know, Paul asked us to help out with it and Seth, and, you know, I think it's what we're doing at this point, I think is very, very fair for.
So Council needs to take action on the final plan.
Is it on both of them?
It's just a.
Somebody made a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes, the Tuscany II Plan of Lots as shown on drawings prepared by the Keystone Surveying and Mapping Inc. dated July 31, 2023, for 339 Just About Land Company LLC, subject to the conditions set forth and explained by Mr. Lauer.
Second.
Motion, the second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I'm recusing, accusing myself.
Four zero one, Mr. Lauer. I think we can, the, do you need a formal motion to deny aye or table aye?
You should table it.
Okay. Item I, authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a developer's agreement with 339 Just About Land Company LLC related to the Tuscany II Plan of Lots.
I'll move to table that.
Second.
A motion, the second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I'm recusing myself.
Four zero one, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills, in Dr. Baroski's absence, I reviewed the payroll and bills. I found them to be in order. I move they be approved to submit it.
Second.
Motion, the second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence request from Len Lutz to extend driveways over township-owned property.
Evening.
Evening.
I have the slides that.
Steve. Steve. Yes. The first map would be great.
Len?
Yes, sir.
Did you want me to make this presentation?
Uh, I'd like to make a couple, just a quick little thing here before, and then I'd be happy to have you jump, jump in with the rest. My brother, Dan and I are fourth-generation residents and of this particular parcel. The cutout in the middle there is, is my brother's house, but the remaining property around that was the property of my late father who passed away in February. We're co-executors of the state and, and the basic two heirs of it. The property is somewhat odd-shaped, as you can see, but it's really more property than, you know, either of us could, could ever handle, and like I said, my brother already has a home. We would like to be able to subdivide the property into some small estate lots, something that is, meets zoning codes and for frontage and, and built, and building site requirements. But the problem, if you could back up to the last.
This one?
Uh, oh, well, that's fine. That's this one here.
Which one?
You can leave it right there. We can, we can deal with that one right there for now. Because of the shape of the property, it's, it's kind of difficult to get access to these lots. This is on a, there's, the line at the top of the property is pretty much the, the crest of the hillside as, as the topography goes. So in order to be able to create decent access to more of the property, we're seeking permission to cut a couple driveways across a, a portion of township-owned property along the Shady Crest next to the cul-de-sac. This would allow us to put two lots at the top of the hill that would meet the township's zoning requirements for frontage and lot size and such, and would simplify how we could basically break up the rest of the property. So the request is to be able to get access to, there's a strip of 25 feet wide by about 204 feet wide, township-owned strip between Shady Crest and the property. So that's, that's the purpose of our, our being here and. I'll let Steve explain in more detail.
Mr. Victor, before you start, Mr. Lauer, is there a reason that we own that land in the first place? How did we end up in ownership of that strip?
Well, we, very conscious decision by Council. As, as you are aware, Council's had a long-term policy of wanting to interconnect plans. And so when this plan was approved, when Timberlake was approved, there, there was obvious that there was an adjoining parcel of land. And so that, that strip is actually owned fee simple by the township, and its sole purpose is to provide connectivity down through that property and so.
But that was, that would be presuming that property was going to be developed as a standard development, right, with half-acre lots?
That's correct. That's correct.
If I could just throw one last thing out here, Steve. That's a particularly hot topic for my brother and I, because, like I said, our family has been there for quite a while. We're not big fans of the amount of development that has kind of surrounded us since we grew up. And we've, we, we thought about possibly developing the property, but have thought better of it because we really just don't like what it does to the community and having a bunch of houses. There's already an awful lot of houses around us from all sides, and we thought the idea of subdividing into larger lots would kind of keep somewhat of the feel that has been on that road since we grew up.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Victor, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No problem. If we could go back to the first slide, just to give you a little more background, as Len pointed out, the Lutz property is 29.5 acres, and at the top of it is the township owns the one-tenth of an acre tract there. And if we go to the next slide, if we, you can see the highlight of that, that green area is 245 feet of frontage along Shady Crest Court, and it's approximately 20 to 25 feet in depth there. And in fact, the effect of it is that it really stops the Lutz Fram family from being able to have access to Shady Crest Court. If we go to the next slide, please. So if we were starting at Shady Crest Court, looking in toward the property that the, property the township owns is that, I'll call it berm area right there, just to the left of the brick house on the right. The next slide takes you further down the street, again, shows you, here's the 245 feet of frontage along the crest there. You'll see how the property rises up, it's about 10 feet in height. The berm that's there probably was created when the Timberlake plan was there. It's not a natural occurrence because just on the opposite side of this, it's a flat area field, which is the extension of the Lutz property. So to be able to have access from Shady Crest into that small portion of the Lutz property is quite logical with that. The zoning in the area is for 100-foot wide, single-family lots. And so on the next slide, what we would propose to do is create what we call Lot 6 and 7 at the top of the sheet there, in which they would split the 245 feet of frontage, so each having about 120 feet of frontage, allowing them to easily access off Shady Crest and where the little asterisks are is where we would envision the houses would be. It would just take a couple of acres out of the Lutz property, and then the majority of the property could then be developed as the five single-family lots as we're showing. Lot 1 would have access in the lower right-hand corner along McCombs Road. Lot 2 would be the current, or the former homestead for their father and late mother. And then in the middle there, not covered, is, there's Dan's house, then Lot 3, Lot 4. Both of them have 100 feet of frontage. They might look like a flag lot, but technically they meet the code requirement. And the expectation is someone will utilize that 100 feet of frontage to build back on larger estate lots. For example, Lot number 14 is close to 14 acres in size. And then Lot number 5 is, there's an existing house at the beginning there, and the envision there was that maybe that house would be replaced by a bigger house on several acres. So we did look at the possibility of having the interconnect road. We had discussions with staff about that, and topographically, Shady Crest sits way up high on the hill down compared to McCombs. It would take a really snaky road to be able to try to do that through there, and we just felt that it was very physically impactful to the property because of the hairpin terms it would take to be able to go back and forth coming down the roadway. So what we're asking is, is it possible to have access through that? Whether that's something legally is possible because you own fee simple, or is it possible that we could at least purchase that property from you? And I know that that has certain requirements for legal sale of the property and whatever that may be. That would be another option if that's deemed by your solicitor to be the means by which we could have access. As to the question of why that exists, I created that subdivision 30 some odd years ago. I have no idea.
Oh, no, I know why that exists. That exists because I was here as well. That exists strictly to provide a means to access that property and create a connection on, on the McCombs Road. That's the reason it exists.
Yeah, but why, if, if the whole means for that, then why 35 years ago did we not, because I participated in this, why did we not just make it part of the road right-of-way? So you could just immediately jump off of it. But by, you owning it, you control it, and so that's what we're here for, is to ask, is there a means by which you would allow us to develop two single-family lots, Lot number 6 and 7 along Shady Crest?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll speak up. I was here back at that point in time too, and I have recalled. I was here back at that point in time, too, and I have recalled the issue of interconnectivity in its infancy back at that point in time of being the issue. I like what you've done. I have no problem with your proposed concept. I mean, I have to shake my head. The previous actions of this council approved 69 new homes, and you look at this and you realize how many more could have been potentially put in front of us. And I mean, it's a good move. I think it's a good move for the township, and I don't care whether we figure out a way to sell it or just give him a right-of-way across.
I would think that would sell.
I thought that required putting it out to bid, though.
Yeah, you know what? For as long as I've been here, I can't think of a situation where someone's coming in and asks for a piece of property, and the township has sold it. That hasn't happened. The other thing, I do think it's important to recognize, you know, this... Steve, if you could.
Oh, sorry.
I can't see through you, Steve.
I'm sorry. This is a familiar map. This is the service area for the three fire stations. If, in fact, there was a connection on this piece of property, those... That area that's in that circle would be within a mile and a half of the new fire station that you just built. You know, one of the things that council has told me that they regret from the past is this failure to interconnect with Green Pines and the Woodlands of Peters. Had that connection been made, you would have that same thing, where you would increase the number of homes that are within the mile and a half of the fire station. Council can do what they want. I do think there is a question that Mr. Smith has to research, is how the township transfers a piece of property to a single individual, and what is the fair compensation for that property if you do so?
Well, my concern, I would not grant an easement, because I don't want us to be on the hook for liability.
Yeah, somebody falls, it's...
Exactly. Somebody slips, you know, on the driveway or whatever, then it becomes our problem. So, I would be completely opposed to an easement. You know, I understand the rationale behind why we would want a connection, but if the Lutzes are going to divide this up into seven parcels, you know, you're only going to have seven houses in there. I don't see how we can compel a connection back down to McCombs. I mean, I will tell you right now, if we were to agree, if Mr. Smith were to be able to conclude that we have, A, the right to sell it to them directly, I'm not sure that we do. I think, if I remember correctly, I think we have to offer it up for public sale.
But do we... I've never seen the deed on this. I wonder what language is in there, if any.
Right, because if it was dedicated as open space, I think we have a...
It's not... I'm almost... We'd have to pull the deed, but I'm almost positive we own this fee simple.
The interesting thing, though, is that usually we own land because it just... We own it, but this was done for that purpose of access to that lot, to that above development for some... You know, I get it to cut through. That's the only potential caveat I see, that the rationale for it was to benefit this land for both of us, for you and the township, albeit what the manager's describing is the benefit they envisioned 37, 35 years ago, Paul, may not ever come to fruition. I think that's the point of council, that those plans may die a slow death if they're never going to make it onto that other road.
Right. Yeah, I like the big estate lots. I think it looks good, but I... Yeah, I mean, I don't know why... Then you get into, let's say they stopped cutting their grass, and they say, "Well, it's the township's grass." You come... I just think that I'd rather sell it.
We could maybe swap it.
I mean, if we put it up for sale...
Can we swap it for other green space?
One neighbor would try to buy it just to keep the houses from going in. But I would say this, though, if we find out that we can sell it to the Lutzes without having to go through public sale or anything else like that, and they come back in with this plan, I would want a note on the plan that says that there will be no further subdivisions. Because I don't want the Lutzes to sell the property to somebody else, and two years later, they come back in with a plan that wants to put 40 houses in there, but now there's two houses built on the top.
Well, that's why I want to see the deed, because it may... This proposed use may be consistent with what they envisioned for owning it back then, for this particular benefit of this property, which may create that little unique window to sell it to somebody individually.
Frank brought up another question, too, though, about a land swap. Isn't that pretty much what we did with Tom Robinson?
Tom Robinson, we did.
And I guess that would depend on whether or not the land was dedicated as open space, but...
But let us do this. Let us pull the deed and find out what... If there is any restriction in the deed, and have Mr. Smith tell us what needs to be done if, in fact, council wants to sell it.
And I think, here with Mr. Robinson, we put such restrictions on that offering as to who could buy that property. Remember, as part of the... Or maybe that was the lease agreement.
Yeah, I thought that was the lease.
Yeah, we swap... You're right, that we swap.
I noticed that there's a memo in there from the fire chief, and it says that... I take it that he's not 100% in favor of that?
What he would rather see is the connection.
The connection. But then he goes on and says that somebody from the engineering department produced a map of what...
Yeah. Do we have that? I don't know. That's this right here on the screen.
That's this. Except you can't... This map shows a straight-line connection, and I can tell you, it's shaped like this to be able to make it.
Well, I mean, I understand. I mean, I'm just... I don't know... I don't know whether it could be done or not.
Well, but you could also say the same thing. I mean, you could take the township map and take every dead-end street now and draw a line down to the next connector road and say, "Well, if this road was here, you know, it would be quicker for the fire truck or the police car to get there."
I'm not saying I'm advocating it. It's just I don't...
Sometimes it's hard for us to figure out.
I thought it was more dropping than that.
I just don't understand. I mean, it doesn't matter, and I'm not saying anything against whoever sat here in the 1990s, but if that purpose of that was to connect it to the Lutz property, why didn't the road go to the Lutz property to begin with?
They didn't own it.
They didn't own it.
No, I mean, when the developer built...
Right. I understand exactly.
Why didn't that road...
I think the idea was to create the maximum of flexibility where that road would connect in.
Okay, all right. So, we'll have Mr. Smith look into it, and once he gives us his conclusions, then I think, from what I'm gathering, the sentiment on council is if we can sell it to you, we would sell it to you. We're not going to grant an easement, but we have to see whether, you know, whether we're able to sell it to you before we know.
And then seemingly, that would be part of another subdivision back to council, right?
Yes, there would have to be a subdivision.
Right. And the suggestion that you had, that there be no further subdivision, we've seen that before. That's quite acceptable.
Perfect.
Yeah. It's a good condition for it. Stronger than a covenant, too. Okay? Thank you very much.
Anything else under correspondence, Mr. Lauer?
Nope.
Anybody want to discuss any of the various committee commission reports? Of course not. Miscellaneous. Number one, update on Drew Drive cell tower.
Much as I had mentioned previously, the Diamond Communications has indicated what their intent is, and they haven't done this yet, is to file an application for co-location for the AT&amp;T antenna, which would be... Would mirror what they did for Verizon. There would be a pole that is located in that proximity. All of the cabling would be taken off the existing tower and run up through that pole with the antenna array would sit on top of the tower. They would also be replacing the electronics at the base of the tower. Having spoken with Ms. Cook, she's waiting for final approval from West Penn for that, and once that occurs, I would expect that we would have an application.
All right. Come on up, Mr. Brown. You've been waiting in the back patiently for an hour or so.
I don't know about the... Paul, you've had some communications with Melissa. There's an existing contract out there on that property. Do you think that there may be an economic concern? Apparently, there's only four years left on... They put that tower in in '03, that cell, right? And it rolls every five years or so.
I own the lease for the AT&amp;T tower.
I know you own the lease.
So...
Just can you give us your name, please?
Ed Frisell.
Can you write it down, too?
Yeah.
So, if they try to put the pole up on my property, it's not happening.
I'm not... I look at that from the other side, and I'm not sure that I can even do that. I know where... I'm not sure where the right-of-way begins and ends with that tower. Okay? If they... That pole is outside of the parameters of that tower. Okay? But I don't know how far on either side that they can go to put that up without coming on my property. And on the back end of that is, their lease ends with me in four and a half years. If they try to do that, they'll be taking it down in four and a half years, because I'm not doing it. So, I guess my question is, you know, how wide is that easement for West Penn Power coming through with that tower?
Seth believes it to be 50 feet.
It's a 50-foot right-of-way for West Penn Power. Under the previous building permit that we issued last year, in addition to the work within the easement, they had to do an addendum to the lease agreement for additional work on the property, but it still all took place within the 50-foot West Penn Power right-of-way.
Okay. Any idea how wide that tower is at the base?
That tower is centrally located. It's probably maybe 25 feet. I don't know. I think there's ample room on either side of the tower for the poles, correct.
Okay. So, I basically... I wouldn't have a say in that, other than when my lease runs out, my lease runs out, I say, "Get all your stuff off my property."
And again, I don't want to say that you don't have any influence of that, because as you and I had spoke before, probably who has more influence on what happens there is yourself, as opposed to the township. And I'm not familiar with the terms of your lease, and so, I have no idea what those provisions are and what the restrictions are. You know, the thing about this is, if AT&amp;T and Diamond Communications, even if there's a short period of time left on the lease, comes in with an application, I don't think the township has the ability to stop them in terms of issuing them a permit. It may be a bad economic decision on their part, but that doesn't mean they're not entitled to get a permit, so...
So, you're...
Have you talked to Ms. Cook?
I talked to her once. I tried to get in touch with her again last week to know if... I had been on vacation for a couple weeks and just got back into town and figured I'd deal with it when I got back, and I haven't heard back from her, and that was probably, you know, beginning of last week.
And again, she doesn't have the official answer from West Penn. She knows of your situation, because I've spoke to her with regard to that and told her that she needs to be speaking with you, so...
Yeah. All right, I appreciate it.
Hey, Ed, do you have a problem with the way they did it now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I sit on my front porch, and I look at these fire hoses coming down up, and I sent Ms. Cook a picture of what I signed off on 20 years ago. One wire coming down on the inside of the corner of the pole, and then you end up with that.
I know what it turned into, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. I figured that at a certain point, you know, appealing to her, and I told her, I said, "A woman in your position, I'm assuming that you have a nice home, and you busted your rear end to get that nice home. Would you like to go to your front porch and look at that every evening and have your glass of wine looking at that?" You know, it's really that simple.
Okay. Thanks, Ed.
All right.
So, what I'm suggesting to you is, after hearing Mr. Frisell, for them to talk about coming in, tearing out the work they did, putting a tower up, they are willing to spend money on this project, or at least they're feigning that they are. So, now, if they review this tape, or if they finally return Ed's call, or if anybody from AT&amp;T returns Ed's call, and they see that he's not a player long-term, they may decide, under economic circumstances, not to go forward with that pole plan. What I think we need to do is exert leverage somehow. I asked her, Paul was copied on it, "Do you have an array of potentialities here in case this scenario doesn't work out?" I didn't get an affirmative answer on that. It seemed to me, after talking to you, Paul, they were only looking at one alternative. It just seems that we're going to continue kicking this can down the road, waiting to see what they say they will do. What we're hearing is that what they may offer will probably not go through based on the economic circumstances. Is there anything we can do in leverage, such as the verbiage that they didn't follow, saying, "Maybe we can take the position of those wires need to come down and see what else they come up with? Maybe they can do a vertical run attached without putting a pole." But all we're doing right now is sitting and waiting for a response from them. It doesn't seem like it'll carry through.
And I don't know that until we get it, so... Until we get a...
Right, but if they make an application...
If they make an application, the township is going to be required to process it. You know, if there was any question, and what I have expressed with regard to this before, the decision out of the Third Circuit Court made it clear, the township's ability to regulate this does not exist.
Right, I'm not arguing that. We're hearing that. If they put an application in, is that a contract that they're committed to putting it up?
It's subject to our review process, but under state and federal law, if that permit is a valid co-location permit, and they have property rights in terms of, even if that lease expires in that short period of time, and they want to pursue it, I don't think the township is in a position to be able...
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, though. I think that they're just playing the clock.
I disagree with you. I think there's actually...
So, why would they go ahead, then, at the last second, "Okay, we're going to turn something into Seth? Hey, by the way, Ed, are you happy with that pole now? Pound sand? You know, and you're going to run out in four years. We're not going to go ahead with this. It's economically unfeasible to go ahead." You don't think if there's anything we should do as a township to amp this up a little bit?
I think when we get a decision from Diamond Communications, we need to take a look at and decide what it is we want to do. I don't think we have a decision, a firm decision.
Right, but I'm saying, they could turn in an application, saying, "This is what we want to do. We want to put up a pole. I'm sorry, the landowner doesn't want it."
Well, we can't say that. I mean, as long as they've got a valid lease, I mean, if they want to spend $100,000 putting up a pole, they're going to take down in a few years. That's on them.
That's my point. And it ain't going to be $100,000.
Well, whatever.
It's going to be more than that. They're not going to do it if he's not happy with it, right? So, all we've done is waste time.
I don't know that I'd be prepared to agree with you there.
We can't, you know, we're not going to... We, as a council here, can't be a party to any negotiations that go on between the landowner and...
No, but you can do other things. You could have done things for the last 10 months of putting leverage on. This work you did was out of scope, and we need to start pushing that. And when you were calling them, and they weren't picking up the phone for you, when Mr. Frisell's trying to call them, they're not picking up the phone, they're just kicking the can down the road. Why can't we be a little bit more proactive on this? We're just waiting for them to maybe turn in plans, and then they'll go, "Well, if Mr. Frisell doesn't sign up for another five years, 10 years, 20 years, we're not going to spend the money." Where are we then?
Well, then, you're probably in a situation where all the wires come down in four years, right?
You're assuming that... Well, I understand that. The lease has the ability to be terminated like that. You know, the problem with using the verbiage is that, I believe legally, once the township... I don't care whether, whatever that acts has, once we issue a permit and it gets built, you can't change your mind. I mean, it's zoning, you know, it's by a stopple. You're granting the building, the construction, and they do it, even if they were halfway through, and you tried to stop it, they'd say, "No, you gave..."
So, they're really just trying to appease us at this point?
Well, that's what I think, you know?
Mr. Brown's right, they're just...
That's what I think. I think they're just trying to work with us, because they may have to come through here again at some point in time in the future.
There you go.
And they don't want to, you know, tick anybody off, but I really don't see any way to get any kind of proactive against it. I mean, we issued it, and they built it, and I...
Yeah, but you issued on the verbiage that they were only going to...
It doesn't matter whether the verbiage, even if your position is correct. If we issue... My position is, from a legal standpoint, is that if you issue the permit and they build it, you're done. You're a stop. You can't do anything.
But they couldn't have issued a permit that would have erected the Eiffel Tower up there. There was verbiage in there that said, "Unhook the existing cable."
I don't think that verbiage is controlling it.
Like I said, even if it is, what they built, we, we gave them a permit to do. And I don't think we go back and say, "This is what we're building."
It says, "Unhook the original line."
I don't think it's that different than what they said.
Did we give them a permit to put in 12 cables? That's never, that's never been laid out.
I, I'm just telling you my position. I just don't think we can have, we can do anything about it.
I, I was thinking that you guys should be on the resident's side and seeing how we can advance us. It's clearly an eyesore.
Of course, no question. But the problem we have, Mr. Brown, let's say you're right, and let's say that the plan that we approved, that we, the building permit that we issued-
Yes, sir.
-only allowed for one line to come down that pole instead of the 12 or 13 they had. And we sent them a notice and it says, "You're in violation of the building permit."
We didn't, though.
But let's say we do. If we do, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, they're going to come in and file another permit application that's going to show a plan that's got those 13 wires on there, and we, our hands are tied, we have to approve it, so all of that-
So that, that, that would be a good one to you guys.
So what we would do is require them to, to file another building permit, which we're requiring-
Well, again, I've said this six, seven times. I never seem to get a clear answer, and I, I will trust the legal leaves. The verbiage was verbiage, only the existing line, unhook it, rehook it. Then Ed Zuck brought November, December, the plans, and they found a little side note on a drawing that you guys saw. It had one wire going up, really clean wire, and somewhere in the over, way over in the corner goes, "Hey, we might run 12 lines." So does that give them a pass? Does that mean they were legal, even though it went against the verbiage on the other, on the other page?
No, I think what Frank said, what Mr. Cozler's saying is that even if you're right, they could just come back in, do it, ask for a new permit. We have no right to legally to deny it, and it's going to be what they drew, what they actually installed.
Yeah, the real, the real problem has persisted throughout this issue, because we're preempted. The permit is almost pro forma. They're just telling us what they're doing. You know, we don't police it so much that we're going up there looking at what the wires are, what the communications are. We just require them to essentially let us know what they're doing. We can't stop it. We can't not issue it. And I think that's the point. Even if we were to take issue with it and they wanted to do housekeeping, they'd just reapply, and they could put $100,000, and we'd have to approve it because we can't get into the technological side, and we can't police it.
How much leverage do I have?
That depends on what you're, we're not, we're not going to give you legal advice, obviously.
I know, but I'm saying-
Yeah, it's your lease.
It's my lease, and I seem to be the key player in here that, that can make all this go away for everybody.
You're the only one that doesn't have a preemption issue. You have a contractual issue. It's outside of our world, but you may have rights in there that you could invoke. We don't, have no idea.
So you need to get yourself to a, you know, attorney, a zoning lawyer, have them review, or real estate lawyer, have them review your lease and see what your rights-
And we reviewed it, and in that contract, that lease that I signed 20 and a half years ago, they have, they have a paragraph in there saying they can update and, and add on, not add on, but they can update and, and do that, and that's exactly what they did. And that's what they told us that they did. They didn't tell us it was going to look like that. But, so, you know, moving forward in, in four and a half years, are you saying that even if I tell them, "I'm done, get your stuff out of here," they could still come and-
No, that is what we're saying.
What I'm saying is, we haven't seen your lease. I don't know if there's an automatic renewal clause in there. I have no idea.
There is not.
Okay, and so it's tough for any of us up here to give you advice as to what your rights are without that document. But again, you're the only one in a unique situation that you may have contractual rights that the township doesn't have.
Yeah, that the state took away from us.
Yeah, we, we don't have it because the state preemptus tied every one of their hands, or there wouldn't be anything up there, so.
Yeah.
So the other issue I have, who sent the application in? Was it Diamond or was it Verizon?
I'm not absolutely sure of this, but I believe it was Diamond Communications.
I think it was Diamond as well.
So was Diamond doing work on behalf of Verizon? How did they sneak the AT&amp;T stuff in and how did we not catch up?
I don't think they snuck anything in.
Well, they kind of did, if they used the verbiage.
AT&amp;T was already there, right?
Right. But this was a Verizon install. And then the only part that AT&amp;T was, was we're only going to unhook the AT&amp;T line and hook it back up after we install Verizon. It was a screw job. They snuck it in.
Well, I, I don't know, but again, with the co-location, preemption, and we even went outside to our special counsel for this particular issue to see if he could find a loophole he couldn't, for, to help the township to enforce.
Right, what, what I'm saying is, we saw this Verizon application run through Diamond. We should have discerned it better. We should have tore out the AT&amp;T part and asked for clarification, or maybe on our next agenda item, the process. We've got to find a better process here so this kind of thing doesn't happen again to somebody else in the township.
All right, Mr. Lauer, do we have any idea when we're going to get this plan of correction, I would call it?
I'm assuming it's coming in the next couple of weeks. What's been explained to me is that the people who are doing this review for West Penn Power in the month of August haven't been there, and that she anticipated that by the beginning of September she would have that hand, so.
Okay, am I, am I even, should I be chasing Diamond or should I be chasing AT&amp;T?
That's something you should talk to your attorney about, who, who it is you should be speaking to.
Who signed your lease?
Yeah.
That was AT&amp;T.
Yeah, that's probably the party.
Because I have a feeling when I talk to Melissa, she's just trying to do her thing, and it's, she's not real worried about me when I say that I'm not renewing.
If you give us a call, we may be able to tell you who the property manager is for AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Okay, we may be able to help you with that.
All right, maybe I'll stop down in a day or two.
You're going to have to give me a day or two to find it, but we can-
All right, I'll stop down at the end of the week.
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right, thanks.
All right, same, Mr. Frisell. All right, next item, discussion of policies related to interactions with public utilities.
So in the docket tonight are four policies that relate to how we interact with public utilities. When we had presented this previously, there was concern that it didn't cover all the methods in which we deal with utilities. So there's a policy that has to do with maintenance activities by the-
Paul, before we move on past, unless you want to talk about them all first. So looking at the first one, the maintenance activities, I wasn't sure, why does it kind of focus on vegetation clearing and-
Well, first of all, it says April 31st. You asked us to, to look at all the ways we interact, and one of the ways we interact with, with public utilities is the maintenance of the right-of-ways.
Yeah, but there's more maintenance activity than just vegetation.
Well, this, this is one policy. The other, the, the one that's, the next one has to do with the occupancy of streets by public utilities, and that's the other kind of maintenance activity they do.
Well, what about pigging? That doesn't require any kind of-
Excuse me?
What about pigging of pipelines, which they do all the time and cause 911 calls because gas odors come up everywhere? That's a maintenance activity, doesn't talk about that in there.
But it's not a, what you asked us for is how we interact with the, the public utility. So when there are repairs to gas lines, for instance, there are occupancy permits required from the township, and those are issued by Mr. Zemitis, and that's what this policy governs.
Yeah, but, so you guys go out, you're saying, ahead of time, before April 31st of each year to get a list-
Should be April 30th, if there's only 30 days.
Yeah, April 30th.
That's the loophole that don't get around. We're waiting for the 31st, it never came.
So by April 31st, you're looking to see if there's any vegetation management projects. So why would you not also reach out to the gas companies and ask what their pigging projects are, or any other kind of pressure testing that doesn't involve approaching the road?
Because that's not permitted or regulated in any way by the township. It's, it's regulated by the PUC.
Yeah, but we're also supposed to be looking for township notification of residents. And I know they make notification because I hear it on the scanner, 911 calls out to the fire departments and says, "Hey, you know, heads up, people's, or whoever the gas company is, there's going to be testing a line, there's going to be gas odors." So, and like I said, people call 911, call the fire department, smell gas odors. That's something that I think we could nip in the bud by reaching out to gas companies ahead of time.
Okay, let me add this. And I, I have a question. I mean, how can, how come we can't require them to tell us this stuff? I mean, I know that it's within the purview of the PUC, but I, I don't see, like, you know, if, if you're coming in and you're going to spray chemicals on a 50-foot wide, you know, like they did a couple of years ago, they came in and told us they were going to do it, and then we, the public came in and we did what we could do. Why, why can't we require that? I mean, that's, that's health, welfare, and safety of, of our residents, right? Well, and, and I don't know that the utility companies are making, I don't know whether Mark, do you have any recollection of this? I don't think they've ever come in and sprayed or cleared the right-of-ways that we haven't been notified. That's what I'm saying. I mean, why can't we, but why can't we, why can't we mandate that they do that? Just in case there's some, you know, you don't know what's going to happen, and somebody may not tell us.
Or at least with sufficient time so you can tell somebody, not just the day before or five days.
Yeah, and they always do this well in advance, but, but let me find out whether or not you can- And I, I agree with you. They've always told us as far as, as long as I've been on council, but like, you never know. You know, you get somebody else, right? And let me find out whether we have the ability to do that. I don't know whether we have the ability to mandate that. Because again, we don't regulate utilities. Well, I'm not regulating them. I'm regulating the fact that they're going to come in here and spray, you know, chemicals that we have no idea what they are next to whatever. Yes. I mean, if they did that where Mr. Frisell lives, it would be next to his house.
Do you have the ability to have a checkoff list before you allow these things to be powered on, returned on, such as the mechanicals were exposed up there for six months, but they were powered up, running at, so, and you know, I kept calling you, like, "Is anybody going to protect the neighborhood and fence this thing in?" There was wires sticking out of the ground. My feeling is, Mr. Smith may know, whether you have the ability to stop them until they remediate, like, fix the road or work out with the township, fixing the road, a schedule for that, fixing yards, reburialing the cable that you left out of the ground. Don't leave rebar just sticking up out of the ground where anybody could fall on it. Can't we develop a checklist of things that need to be done, mark this project as safe or complete before you plug in and let them do it?
Well, I know, for instance, with the roadways, I mean, usually coordinating market paving and things like that, putting it back together. We don't let them, we don't let them turn their gas off until it comes back on. So I think because they're utility, they have status through the PUC to operate at the PUC's discretion, not ours. But you're right, I mean, I think at some point the township did get involved when you identified some of those features, and I think that was part of the meeting that was here, that needed to be remedied.
Right, they're saying, "Oh, they repaired the road and everything, but they were up and running." They, they had no push.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're not like a regular, regular citizen that we can withhold an occupancy permit or something like that, which you're alluding to.
But in terms of the public improvements, what's required is that the roadway be bonded. So even if they power things up and the roadway hasn't been repaired yet, it will be repaired because there's a bond there guaranteed that that was-
Well, that's what I said, that at least they'd worked it out with you, but it was, it took a lot of pushing by residents. I, I still had an immense concern about the safety factor that was going on up there. I think that's one that we could really lay in.
Well, on, on that point, so, you know, I acknowledge we don't have the authority ourselves, but we're also acknowledging that the PUC does have the authority. I would assume that we have leverage with the PUC that we could reach out and say, "Hey, you guys oversee this. This is a problem out here. It's starting to save public safety. Do something." Rather than just sitting on our hands, "Oh, we can't do anything."
But I'm going to say, we don't sit on our hands because the township has, on, in various occasions dealing with, with the utilities, filed informal complaints with the PUC to get things rectified. A perfect example is when Verizon notified us that there was no way in hell, they were going to take the trees that are sitting on lines down. An informal complaint to the PUC caused Verizon to go out and, and remove those lines. And one of the things that I do on, you know, when we get people calling in with concerns about things related to utilities, I always encourage them to file an informal complaint. It's a very simple thing to do. It doesn't take hardly any time, and the PUC pays attention to those.
But you don't think there's anything we can add from a safety perspective of, "You can't tie this into the power lines until you have that trench filled out, until you have mechanicals blocking it up."
You're describing, like, withholding occupancy permit in our world, in the zoning world, which we don't have that authority. But obviously, if there's a dangerous condition, if there's a hole in the road, the township's not going to ignore their own road or their property. They're going to file a complaint and redress it as any way we need to, but-
I was calling on the fencing for several months.
It's not necessarily on-
I was getting done, and then I'm not with the Verizon people out there, and they lie to Paul.
Yeah, I mean, it's not on public road or property or-
I'm not arguing, but you're just saying we can't put any kind of provision in saying this, this, like, if somebody ran the gas line Frank's talking about, they leave a freaking trench there, and they don't fill it in, and kids are falling into it, we can't stop them.
We can, because there would be a, that would be a, a occupancy permit of a street, and we do regulate that, and to make sure that in fact those, that trenching is done and it is secured every evening in a way that's safe. So one of the things the township has done over the last few years is, we actually have a former Public Works Director who serves as an inspector on all the water and, and gas lines, projects that are in town, and part of that is to coordinate between the utilities and the township, and part of it's to make sure that, that things are done safely, and also to provide notification from people when work is being done.
Yeah, I just think that, I'm just wondering if there's anything we can put in there at all before you give them the final checklist, if you guys are good to hook in.
All right, has anybody on council had a chance to look at these proposed policies? Anybody got any revisions they want to propose to Mr. Lauer?
Just the one I've talked about, other than- They're going to have to come back to council because they're going to be adopted by resolution.
So you want to put these on the next agenda, then?
I can do that.
All right. Moving on, Phase Two, Rolling Hills Park. Mark?
You should have, from your, I think it's pink cover page, I want to get your attention. We've got proposals for starting the design and partnering for Phase Two of the park that we discussed. It's in concert with the approved master plan, two basketball courts, deck hockey court, volleyball court, dog park, restroom, interconnectivity with sidewalks, driveway off the Rolling Hills Drive. These are just kind of for your keeping. We're not going to have a vote tonight to award a contract for this design. We're going to do it in that meeting, I'm going to type a memo, make a recommendation. I just wanted you to have, just kind of put on your radar screen that next meeting we're going to talk about it, and hear the proposals. And we've got proposals from three firms there. It's HRG, JLT, and Gateway. The rationale behind that, these are all firms that we've had successful, large, significant projects with. We've got a good track director with these firms. We've gotten good, good final, you know, products and good results, so that's, for these professional service contracts, that's the way we want.
Thank you, Mr. Zemitis. Budget calendar draft, Mr. Lauer?
Well, I have the, the proposed budget calendar. We are moving the, the initial budget workshop, the, the second budget workshop, we're moving it to October 16th to provide an opportunity to do the police chief interviews on the second. Here are a few other dates that are out there. This Friday is Mr. Burgery's recognition, if you haven't already and you're interested in attending, you need to RSVP to the school district. We have a board recognition reception at the country club on September 20th. And then, although council is, I don't think ever attended, but there'll be staff representation[1734.70] at the Washington County Officials Convention on October 12th.
Called a little bit of time for those chief interviews?
Well, yeah, yeah, it's, do you want to do the chief interviews at 7:30 or 7?
Up to you guys, I mean, I can do either.
Somebody said that.
We're doing, if we're doing three in one night.
I thought somebody said that they couldn't do it at 7.
Well, I think it was Tom coming back from.
Is that what it was? Was it Tom?
I think from work, he said he could make 7:30, he couldn't make 7.
Okay, we can set off for 7:30.
All right, we'll set off for 7:30 then.
That was Tom. Format, I'm not so sure I liked what we did.
No, then we're going to do it, go back to the old thing.
Where we'll split up.
The reason we didn't do that the last time is because we only had two applicants.
So we'll be doing them concurrently.
Right.
And then come back.
Rotating through, coming back together.
All right, I, I don't know that I was able to understand that from what I was given.
All right, anything anybody wants to see on the next agenda?
I don't know if I want, I don't want to put this on the agenda, I just wanted to comment that, that, you know, I was looking at this thing online, it's called Next Door. Do you know what that is?
Yeah.
And it, something caught my eye, I don't know if it was today or yesterday, it was talking about the trail in Peters Township, that people need to, maybe people should come down here and, you know, point out to us that a lot of people are not happy with how people are utilizing the trail, specifically bikers and their dogs. And they're getting, you know, I mean, it, it was pretty nasty stuff about.
Always is.
And, you know, they're going too fast, and some of them saying, you know, I'm on your left or whatever, some don't say anything, and their, their dog almost gets mowed over. And so now like some of these people were going to, you know, wherever, to Mingo to walk their dog and stuff like that. I mean, do we have any kind of statistics that, that, you know, about, you know, injuries or stuff like that on the, on the trail?
I'm on it five days a week.
Somebody's going to get hurt. The e-bikes are atrociously over the speed.
I didn't even realize that there was a, a speed limit for the bikes.
I don't know how to consider it exercise.
And they're 74% are going a lot faster than 15 miles an hour, whatever that limit is.
Five miles, I think. They're like 25.
That's what I'm saying, you could kill somebody out there.
Maybe we need to look on, do we have the authority? We do have the authority to put up speed signs, right?
Sure, again, enforcing them is going to be a difficult thing to do. But you know, since that trail has been, been created, the mixed use on the trails has always been a problem. You know, you have people up there with baby strollers, you've got rollerbladers, you've got walkers, you've got runners, you've got people on bicycles, and, and this has always been a challenge.
But we still have a prohibition in place on the electric bikes, so I think we need to enforce that.
But if we're going to, we have a rule, I, you know, I'd have to go take a look and I'll talk to John about this. I don't know whether the way that's adopted, that it's enforceable by being able to issue a ticket, and I think that's what you need to be able to do. Because unless a police officer can enforce it, it's not going to do any good. Let me check that out, I'll let you know, I'll let you know at the next meeting.